be for the 25% up to 311 for the new arena.
That's correct.
And so voters would have the choice of voting on both of those, one of them. And that's how it would be presented essentially though to the voting public.
That's correct.
Okay. So let me, let me ask, I guess, a little bit about, about that because I think we've all come to a place here where, you know, early on, it seemed a little bit counterintuitive for the county to put dollars into an arena that would essentially compete with our county-owned asset. I think part of where, at least I can't speak for the court, but where I've come is that the Spurs are an important part of our community. And I've never heard from them or either explicitly or hinted that their desire was to leave San Antonio. I, I think that they, their priority has always been to stay, but to be part of the rebirth of, of a downtown corridor that needs to, to be kind of in the middle of the Renaissance of, of downtown. But I also think we ought to deal in reality, and that is that sports are competitive and there are probably other communities out there that would be salivating to have our Spurs go to their communities. But I, again, that's not been part of the calculation. That's just something I'm saying is in the back of my mind. And so, you know, I, I think it's important to, to underscore that. The, the, I think the other thing to kind of highlight is, and you've mentioned it a few times in your presentation, and that's the term subject to voter approval. We are essentially moving forward, if we do today, to put this on the ballot, but it by no means obligate any dollars today. It essentially is going to be up to the voters. And, and that gives me confidence in the sense that that's as, as much as you can get, a democratic process, and if folks believe that this is a good project. Obviously, there's other moving parts. The city and the Spurs are still talking, but this would be our contribution to making sure that the Spurs are here, hopefully for the next 50 years. I know they just celebrated their 50th anniversary. And the way I look at this is, of course, you know, growing up a Spurs fan, but taking that away as a policymaker is a, an economic development deal, much like if HEB came to us, or Frost Bank, or USAA and said, hey, we want to grow and we want to continue to grow with San Antonio. We believe it's a good partnership, and we've seen that for 25 years, that the Spurs have been good partners. I think that we would look at ways, whether it was through tax incentives or some other way, to make sure those companies grow here and flourish here. And then, so that's, that's the way I see this. In this case, we are utilizing potentially a source of revenue that was dedicated specifically for a venue-type project, and it's paid for by folks who visit our community. It's not paid by general revenue funds or property tax owners. So that gives me a lot of confidence that we, I think, are making a good investment. And, and again, ultimately, it's up to the, the voters to decide. So I, I know we've got plenty of other questions and, and comments, but I do want to put a motion on the floor today, Judge, and let me read it so it's compliant. The motion would be to approve an order by the Commissioners' Court of Bear County, Texas, ordering an election to be held in Bear County, Texas on November 4th, 2025, on the question of approving and implementing a resolution designating the development of improvements to Freeman Coliseum, Frost Bank Center, and San Antonio Stock Show and Rodeo facilities, and a new multipurpose arena for the San Antonio Spurs as venue projects, and designating the method of financing of such venue projects pursuant to Chapter 334 of the Texas Local Government Code, making provisions for the conduct of the election and for the conduct of a joint election with various political subdivisions, providing for other matters related to such election, and providing an effective date.
Second, and I have a question.
Motion by Commissioner Rodriguez, second by Commissioner Clay Flores. Commissioner Clay Flores, you have the floor.
So it's unfortunate that just this whole day, this whole process has taken so long because there were so many citizens to be heard earlier, and it looks like most of them are not here. So I wish I could respond to some things. Commissioner Rodriguez touched on some of it, so I'm going to reiterate some stuff because no matter how many times we say this, the misinformation is out there that we are using taxpayer dollars on things where we have more important needs. I agree, if we can decide where to use venue or hot tax, personally, I put it all in mental health, keeping people from rotting in jail, preventive health, colon cancer awareness stuff. There's so many things that I fight for, that I would rather have money put for. But legally, we are the county, we are an agent of the state, and legally, by state law, venue hot tax has to be voted on by voters. So I'm supporting this because my constituents get to go vote and decide. And when they vote on this, it can only be used for certain venues, period. We can't use it on housing. We can't use it on mental health as much as I would like. So I just hope that as we talk about this as a community and the media, that we can put better information out there. This was not started by us, but we are here to make this decision. So the way that I explain this to my constituents is, it's like the county's the landlord and we have three tenants, the Freeman, the rodeo, and the Spurs. So we need to be good landlords and first take care of our assets, which is, which are the Freeman Coliseum and the Frost Bank Center. Also, being a proud San Antonio girl and growing up as a Spurs fan, like Commissioner Rodriguez, I want to make sure that our Spurs stay here. And this is part of the competitive world of sports and new arenas and technology and the American economy. Ideally, I would love for us to just remodel, like a good landlord, remodel an old building. But apparently, that's not good enough. So that's why I'm happy to support this, so that we can take it to our voters and let our voters decide if we're going to give the Spurs a new arena so that they can keep up with the NBA world of new arenas and technology. Also, part of the miscommunication is this is not Project Marvel. We, as the county, have nothing to do with that. Nada que ver. So please stop talking about, when y'all talk to us, quit talking to us about Marvel and City. We are the county. Thank you.
Commissioner Moody.
Well, thank you, Judge. Appreciate everyone's participation today and appreciate so many friends coming out from the rodeo and the Spurs. RC Buford, got Bobby and Walter, got Cody from the rodeo here, Audrey's somewhere back there as well, Phil, see you high now in the back. So many friends of, of our community. But this is a difficult item. I want to say, you know, and I've said this before, I support the rodeo 100% and I support our Spurs 100%. I have been working with our, our Spurs organization on North Park, which is going to be a, a new county park in the vicinity of the Rock. It's a great partnership, look forward to continuing it as we go forward. But this deal, as written, contains a poison pill that I just can't swallow, and that's the tax increase of $50 million that's included in it. I hope that everyone knows that I've negotiated in, in good faith on this item. I've tried to make it better along the way and advocated for my constituents and for This, this item, though, as written, again, was not my choice, and I really wanted to get to yes. I, I wanted to, to get to a place where, where I could support it, and I made these good faith efforts towards that end. I am glad to see the 25% cap that's included, which I offered up, and I'm glad to see that. I think it keeps balance in the deal and it protects Bear County taxpayers. And there are real economic benefits to both these projects, obviously, the expansion of the rodeo grounds and ensuring that our Spurs stay in San Antonio for the next 50 years, as my colleagues highlighted. We shouldn't look past that, right? I will say, for the record, I think some of the, the projections that have recently been reported in the media are extremely rosy, but there are real economic development impacts and value in both these projects. But again, this ballot proposition incorporates this tax hike, and it's just a bridge too So last two points I'll make here. The timing of this is also problematic. We have previously discussed in this court that we would want to see a commitment, not only from the Spurs, but from the city of San Antonio, before making a decision to put anything on the ballot. Obviously, we sit here today and we do not have a commitment from the city of San Antonio on their contribution to the Spurs arena. I, I find that problematic, making a commitment to put something on the ballot without an entire or complete structure in place. But I do support the opportunity for voters to weigh in on this item. And, you know, ultimately, they will make their decision in November, but I just can't endorse the $50 million tax increase in this ballot proposition. Thank you.
Commissioner Calvert.
Thank you, Judge, and I want to thank everyone who came to speak today and just know from my vantage point, I hear everybody, I've heard you all. We have begun an initial meeting, a community benefits agreement meeting with the rodeo, with the Coliseum Advisory Board. The Spurs were not present at that time, but I anticipate that they will be in future conversations. I think all of the parties understand the importance of having those conversations for electoral success. I have concerns about the wisdom of choosing an off-year November election on the cusp of a recession, and I have made those clear to the Chair of the Coliseum Advisory Board and this court. But this is the path free will has chosen, and I will take the policy suggestions and those who made them to the discussions of community benefit that will be the focus of this vote for every voter. As someone who has always believed people will make the best choices for themselves eventually, and I say eventually because people do not always make the right choice initially, but over time and the course of understanding, they do make the right choices, here we are, onward to an election. Thank you, Judge.
All right. Any further conversation or communication with the court?
Yes.
Commissioner Clay Flores, I'll yield back to you.
I just have to reiterate, I didn't say this when I said it earlier. This is not a tax increase. That's part of the misinformation in the community. This is for people who come to town and stay in a hotel and rent a car. So I don't know about y'all, but I don't rent cars here and I don't stay in hotels. So this is a tourist, a tax on tourists, on visitors who come. This is not a tax increase. Thank you.
Hey, any further comments? I'll close with my comments. Let me go on record and be crystal clear as the county judge of this wonderful county. You heard me earlier this morning with Bishop Pfeifer and Rabbi Nathan asked that they would include Bear County in the prayers so that we can come together as a community. I hope after today, that although we had a robust discussion, that no matter what decision is made today, that we will come back as a community, although we may not always agree, and we may have very serious disagreement, what action is being taken today. But let me say this. Let me give a little history for the record, for the public, for the media. Since we first learned of the conversations between the city and the Spurs about a possible move downtown in 2023, this is my first year as county judge. Had no idea that I would, in my first term, have this issue on the table. But that's what I signed up and running for county judge. This court and county staff have worked diligently, and I want to applaud David Smith and his staff, and in the limited timeframe, to steer this period of tremendous growth toward an outcome that best serves our community. We said no deal without a plan for the county Coliseum complex, the Frost Bank Center, and the Freeman. We said no homeowner property taxes for the county's contribution, substantial private equity by the Spurs, and a joint public-private partnership of a new proposed arena. And we said clearly, and I articulated, we are prioritizing the east side redevelopment with our investments. In planning with our partners at the Coliseum Advisory Board led, and I want to thank Derek Howard and his board for their leadership, the rodeo, Cody Davenport, his board, and his tremendous cadre of volunteers that put on one of the most successful rodeos in this country. The city of San Antonio and the Spurs have made great strides since 2023. Yet, in January of this year, despite tremendous pressures, I made it clear there was not enough information to move forward with the May election, the city elections. Since then, we have committed, and I want to remind both the county, the city, and the Spurs, that we agreed to work in good faith with a memorandum of understanding, and we worked with the Coliseum Advisory Board, and we worked with the leadership of San Antonio's because they are valuable partners and stakeholders in this discussion. Today, now, we have a plan to redevelop the Coliseum complex and maintain Frost Bank Center and the Freeman. The Coliseum and rodeo teams have top-notch leaders. They engaged in world-class venue and events, consultants to form a plan to redevelop and activate the county fairgrounds year-round, a sustainable business plan for our county facilities, drawing community, commerce, and activity to the east side, and you heard that today with some of the support because of what the rodeo has done for our community, and establishing accessible community amenities. This meets our fiduciary duty to protect these county facilities and taxpayer investments over the long term. So we are now in a position to set a foundational piece for the east side with the renovated Coliseum grounds and facilities. So let me say that again, a foundational piece. This is just the start of what we can do and sky's the limit for the east side that should have been delivered many years ago, but yet, has yet to be done. And so I understand, everybody wants all these particular projects. Let me remind everybody that that is my promise and commitment, that we're continuing to commit to the redevelopment east side. This is just the start. This is the foundational piece that needs to be done in order to think big for the east side and that area around the Frost, Freeman, and Coliseum grounds. This also meets our commitments, no homeowner property taxes. We're looking exclusively through the venue tax, a tourist tax from hotel rooms and vehicle rentals. I agree to disagree with Commissioner Moody. The proposed hot tax from 1.75% to 2% is crucial to keep Bear County competitive in the long haul. We will have future venue projects, and that is a discussion that this court will continue to have. What else can we do with the statutory requirements that Commissioner Clay Flores put out? We can continue to do more for this community with this particular venue tax, and why can't we, and why shouldn't we, take advantage of a 0.25% on the tourist to make these projects happen throughout the county, to hopefully address what the community has asked us to do? Judge, you got a lot of things we want. Well, nothing comes free, guys. We need to continue to grow. If that, and I'll make it very clear, if we don't grow, then status quo is not acceptable for a growing community such as Bear County. In January, we made it clear, there was not enough information to move forward with the May election, and there was not enough coordination and collaboration with partners. Quite frankly, the Spurs, they're here in the room, they pushed me hard. They wanted a May election. I said, no way, sorry. But the court backed me up at that time. Since then, we set out an MOU with the city and the Spurs to establish a mutual exploration and pursuant to our Coliseum redevelopment and new downtown arena. We now have laid out our contributions, as have the Spurs. We heard from Peter John Holt this morning, $500 million in direct arena cost, another $500 million in private development that will help support the city's contribution through the TURs, the Tax Increment Reinvestment Zone, which is the same mechanism that we used to support and now are set out for a new baseball stadium downtown, and a proposed community benefits agreement upwards of $30 million, which is an agreement between the Spurs and the city. And I've told the Spurs, we still need to fulfill a community engagement plan. So I'll be back to you, Spurs. The city has laid out a solid funding framework and funding mechanisms. City Manager Eric Walsh says they're in the range of 450 to 500 million. While they have yet to take formal action, I believe, according to the negotiations and the conversations, that they are edging toward an agreement with the Spurs, and I will take the good faith of the Spurs and the city of San Antonio that they will have a deal. And through town halls, and I want to applaud Commissioner Calvert and his town hall meetings, again, you heard, they have, the community does not understand the deal, so to speak. They have needs, and they made it very clear that they feel that the promises to the east side have not been met, and that's the reason why I believe today is the first step towards making that commitment. I want to applaud my co-chair with the East Side Advisory Council, Representative Barbara Gervin Hawkins, who I think is tied up, maybe out of state at this time, and the many direct stakeholders. Meetings, we have received substantial public input, and I've made it clear to the East Side Council that we're in it for the long haul. We're going to have to continue to meet so that we fulfill the promises that were made to the east side. I believe there's a compelling case that establishing a new downtown arena will expand our economic development and commercial activity in a way that will benefit the entire community. Again, I give respect to those that disagree, but can we agree to disagree and hopefully make a decision in the best interest of this community? I believe that redeveloping the east side facilities, improving the ability, the rodeo and the Coliseum Advisory Board to program year-round will set a foundational piece for the redevelopment of the east side. As we prepare to take this momental step with the vote we're about to take, it is the expectation of this Commissioners' Court that the city of San Antonio will act decisively in resolving the negotiations and moving for a final deal so that the public can understand. But you also have heard the comments, the county is not connected with Project Marvel. This referendum is very specific. It is being done in order to get approval from the Attorney General, and it is two steps. Can we commit the county venue tax to the county facilities, Frost Bank Center, Freeman Coliseum, the Coliseum grounds, and whatever is left over with the cap? Can we help the San Antonio Spurs? I am committed to keep the San Antonio Spurs in the city of San Antonio, Bear County. May I also suggest that although the word Project Marvel, and I believe Commissioner Clay Flores has made it very clear, that this transaction, this vote today is not in any way, whether we approve or disapprove, Project Marvel. What I am submitting to you, the public, to the voters, and to my colleagues on the court, is to support, quote, "an economic revitalization of the downtown and east side with a joint city-county project." And can we join with the San Antonio Spurs, a great corporate citizen organization that gives back much to this community? And I give them value and credit for what they do as a team, what they do individually through their players, through Coach Pop, through Peter John Holt, and the administration, RC Buford, Bobby Pettis. I thank the San Antonio Spurs for the contributions you've made year in and year out. But I'll also tell the San Antonio Spurs, we still got a lot of work to do, and we still have much more to do, and I expect y'all to keep up that philanthropic contribution. So today, Commissioner Rodriguez, you have moved. Commissioner Clay Flores, you have a second? Further discussion, I will call for a vote. I will call for a roll call vote. Commissioner Clay Flores?
Yes.
Commissioner Justin Rodriguez?
Aye.
Commissioner Graham Moody?
No.
Commissioner Tommy Calvert?
Aye.
County judge votes aye. Motion is approved. This concludes this action item. We will now go on to, refresh my memory later, we're going, okay, we have a time certain, so let me tee up time certain, 1:30, which is the presentation, discussion, appropriate action regarding the proposed improvements and expansion of San Antonio River Authority's Next Generation Flood Warning System. Mr. David Smith, I think San Antonio River Authority? Welcome to the Commissioners' Court. We're a little, we're, we're in a little late here, so David Smith started off.
So you guys just took an important action, but in my humble opinion, the vote you're going to be asked to take on this is even more important. So.
Concur.
After the Biddle Creek events recently, the county judge's office asked the River Authority to prepare a post-event report on what they believe happened. When I read the report, I was struck by the level of modeling they were capable of doing on that creekway. So I called, asked Derek for a meeting and said, Derek, can we do it, this same level of modeling on all our creekways? And he said, not only can we, but we're in the process of doing it. And in fact, I think he's more than half the way there. So then I asked the next question, which was, if we have predictive models in place, why can't we put in a set of predictions that says, I'll use your, Commissioner Moody, your precinct. You put an inch of rain per hour for three hours over Halotas Creek, what's going to happen? Two inches per hour for three hours, three inches, four inches? Have that sitting on a shelf countywide, or better yet, plugged into some automated system? Derek already has meteorologist on standby for these events? So if you could put that modeling in place with the appropriate technology, near-real-time rain gauge sensors, feeding that data into a model that already exists, why couldn't we proactively instruct people to shut down the low-water crossings before the flooding ever happens? And he said, yes, we can do it. And a week later, I was talking about money with him. That, so I... That, so I want to thank Derek and his team for responding so quickly. He's calling it the Next Generation Flood Warning System. What I think it does is has the potential to be a game changer locally and to turn first responders into pre-responders. With that, I'll turn it over to Derek.
Thank you, David. Good afternoon, Judge. Good afternoon, Commissioners. I'm Derek Bays, general manager and CEO of the San Antonio River Authority. And I'm also the chairman of Region Twelve, the Regional Flood Planning Group that was stood up by the state in the aftermath of Hurricane Harvey. Steve Metzler is with me. He is our Director of Water Resources and our technical, one of our technical experts. I'd also like to recognize our chairman, Mr. Jim Campbell of the San Antonio River Authority Board. Should I use this for the clicker? Okay. So just a brief summary to talk about, you know, the circumstances that lead San Antonio to have the flooding challenges that it does. You know, we sit at the base of the Balcony's escarpment. You have a unique intersection of western and coastal plains. You have a lot of unpredictable weather. You have a rapid elevation change. A lot of people don't realize, but it's actually over eight hundred feet in elevation change in a very short period of time. And then the ground underneath, impervious limestone, a lot of erosive soils and very steep slopes in places, all of which leads to a combination that makes us, you know, in prime location in flash flood alley and has led to a number of, you know, unfortunate and tragic events over the years. But while we're here today, as David described, and I appreciate his comments about my team, we have a lot of really smart people, far smarter than I am, I will say. The meteorologist he referred to is not only a meteorologist, but also a professional licensed engineer, which is one of the more unique combinations I've come across in my career. But it's folks like that that really give us a chance to get ahead of these sort of things. And that's why I'm here today to talk about what we hope will be county investment. Because things change. Development changes, population, the growth that the region has seen in the last number of years certainly adds to the challenges that we face. Technology changes. Just the event of AI itself has led to a number of developments. And we think it's time to reevaluate how our models and our predictive flood models work. And also weather changes. We see more unpredictable events. We see more severe events that are oftentimes very localized. Like we saw with the unfortunate incident on Biddle Creek in June, where thirteen people lost their lives. So this just highlights the unique challenges that we face in our region. I will say too, there are, not only the San Antonio River runs through Bear County, but you have five major creeks and you have, you know, countless number of smaller creeks and waterways that as the water flows, you know, contributes to the risk to both people's lives and people's property. Brief history, so the Bear Regional Watershed Management Partnership, or the BRWM, was formed back in 2002. Started with a response to the floods of nineteen ninety-eight and then brought together again by flooding in the early two thousands. What it is now is a virtual flood district, which has twenty-two public entities within Bear County, the leaders of which are Bear County, the San Antonio River Authority and the city of San Antonio. Since 2002, we have, we collectively have invested over two billion dollars in flood mitigation projects. That is the county bond programs, that is city bond, that is River Authority technology and development. And that also includes operations and maintenance, annual smaller projects that don't meet the bond, but two billion dollars. But what I'm here to say is, you know, as I said, times change. And we believe it is also time to continue that investment and use all these reasons to take us to the next level. It's just a quick snapshot, but this Bear Regional Watershed Management, we have, we run a flood site, a website called bearflood.org. It currently pulls in gauge data from the county gauge network, the city gauge network, River Authority gauge network and others. There's a floodplain viewer, there's a watershed master plan viewer. But this data is also used currently to help populate things like Waze and Google Maps. And we're in discussions with Apple right now. So what we're talking about today is what does that roadmap to the future look like? When David and I met two weeks ago, man, it feels, doesn't seem like two weeks ago. But you know, I think we challenged each other to really say, what does the best-in-class system look like? How do we progress the safety and the security of our community? I will highlight, you can never eliminate risk. Anybody who works in the flood, flood world will tell you that. But there are things we can do to help reduce and mitigate it. And that's what I want to talk to the court about today. It's going to take multiple things. Some of those we believe we can start immediately or in the very near term, next couple of months. Some will take probably a year. Others will take longer than that when you get into major infrastructure projects. But you have to start somewhere. And so the goals of this multi-pronged approach, reduce or eliminate the water rescues at low water crossings. Improve our technology. Again, I mean, things change so rapidly. We updated our predictive flood model, what we call Predictive Flood 2.0. Roughly four years ago was when we rolled that out, but a lot has changed since then. Get more structures out of the floodplain and the floodway. And above all, make everything more resilient to be able to respond to events as future weather conditions change. So this multi-pronged. Primary reason that I'm here today speaking to the court. But it also means flood infrastructure. Those are those big projects that people often associate with bond programs. Those are part of this. Communications and advocacy. I think it's oftentimes easy to forget about that. But making sure the public knows and is constantly reminded. What we often see following a major disaster, whether that's here, New Orleans, where I came from previously, or anywhere across the country, that memories fade and complacency starts to set in. And so we believe it's incumbent upon any sort of program to make sure that the risks and the dangers that remain stay in the forefront of people's minds. And then finally, with whatever system that we build, the county builds, anyone who's in this takes on, you have to maintain it and you got to keep it up and running. So since David, you know, and I had that discussion a couple of weeks ago, working with Art and the county's Public Works team, input from the city of San Antonio, we came up with cost estimates for what we think we need for the region to get a much more improved flood warning system. And what you see there is the top two lines are roughly twenty-two million dollars. That's the Bear County system, the city of San Antonio system. There's another, we estimate thirty-two, almost thirty-three million dollars worth of needs I want to highlight. Those are not in Bear County. Those would be in our jurisdiction, which goes downstream to Wilson, Carnes and Goliad. But also, we would look to expand the network and the flood warning system in the four counties that are adjacent, generally on the northern side of Bear County. Because as you can see going back, the watershed on the right is far bigger than my jurisdiction. It's far bigger than Bear County and there's a lot of creeks and rivers that flow into our jurisdiction. This is a cliche, but I think it's often important to repeat, is that water does not care about political boundaries. So a total right now is our estimate of roughly fifty-five million dollars. We've sent that forward to the legislature, but there's a lot of uncertainty in what they will focus on. But I think we can take action, working with our partners at the county today, to, regardless of what happens, to be, you know, stand on our own and move this system forward. I won't go into all the details. If there are any specific questions as I go along or at the end, Steve Metzler here can help answer some of the more technical questions. But a little over ten million dollars currently estimated. What you see is low water, essentially an improvement in gauges, in the type of gauges, the quantity of gauges, the SCADA system or the automated system that takes in all of this data and helps process it and send it to the appropriate place, whether it's our predictive flood system or the Emergency Operations Center. A big chunk of this is low water crossing gates. You know, roughly almost just under five million dollars of that, which are also an important part. There is no silver bullet to mitigating flood problems. You know, there are gauges and there are warnings, there are gates, there's better software, there's communication. None of it can do it, do it by itself. It takes a combination of these types of efforts. And then also upgrading our software, which helps, we believe will help get the system, take that gauge network, run it faster, run it better and look to, for that more detailed analysis that David referred to. Very similar, these are the needs within the city of San Antonio. Also, same thing, gauges, improving the programming, more gauges, and then a lot of low water crossing gates and warning systems. Almost two-thirds roughly of their needs sit with the low water crossing gates. And just a quick example. So this roadmap, this flood warning system, you know, right now, both in the gauge network and our own computer software network, we have proprietary technology. That's what was available at the time. If you want to get away from that, we believe that it will be faster and more efficient and in the long run, actually probably cheaper to get away from proprietary and be able to use things that are more readily available. Expand and improve on that system of sensors and proactive alerts. It gets down, it boils down to time. Because the faster that a gauge can read something and get it to our system, we can feed it to the EOC, we can feed it to our predictive flood and that shortens the time for first responders to get out there and do what they need to, for Public Works to get out there and block roads if necessary. But time becomes, is very, very critical. And then update that predictive flood model, which is an ongoing process, but we think we can take it to the next level with the county's support. So immediate, make sure everything, all those gauges are working and also do some reprogramming to get gauge alert thresholds that have additional warning levels. That will help feed more information. That's probably three to six months ballpark as we work through this. And we are, I should emphasize, we are still working through costs. We think we can refine those as we go. And that will help drive a better timeline that we can come back to the court and discuss once we've got a handle, a better handle on it. But our current estimate is probably three to six months. Short-term, standardize that programmable equipment. Get manually low water crossing gates out. You know, if the ideal, the end state when it comes to a low water crossing gate is that it's automated, that there's a trigger from a, like a rain gauge or a stream gauge, that will, it'll automatically close. But in the interim, work towards getting gates in the appropriate places that a crew can go out and close by hand. Single command center, single note, so it can be easily shared with all partners. The city, the county, the suburban cities that we work with, neighboring counties, up to the state. Wherever it needs to go, that's the end state. And then get our new software, our new predictive flood model, what we're calling 3.0, and take, take that to the next level. That is probably a twelve-month process at our current estimate. And then long-term, leverage that predictive flood model to help get better in future infrastructure needs and get those low water crossing barricade gates automated. This gets, this looks a little busy. But I think you see, what you see on the left as I'm looking at the screen, it's that network of stream and rain gauges. And I think that's important. It's not just a rain gauge, you need the stream gauges too. Those all will feed into, you know, currently feed into the city and the county sensors, some of our own. They all come together at the River Authority and then they get pushed out through bearflood.org or through Waze or Google Maps or to the appropriate EOCs as necessary. But we think there is a better way as we progress. And I'll talk about that in a second. I talked briefly about communications and advocacy. We can't forget about this, but the public service campaigns regularly reminding people about the risk they take about flooding and what it can do and what is important to remember. We even had discussions internally. Some of my staff have kids that have just gone through driver's ed. And there's, you know, their relay was that there's not one single mention of what to do when you're dealing with driving on a flooded road, a heavily flooded road. They talk about rain when it's wet, but there's a big difference when you're driving. Public awareness for when we get that new software and hardware out there and then just continued additional outreach. And O and M, this is always the tricky part because again, memories fade. And it's not a new piece of software, it's not a new dam, it's not one of those things. But it takes maintenance to keep them up and to have them do their job and perform when the time comes. So we want to make sure that O and M stays to the forefront of all of our minds. But I also want to say, right now, we have the city's network, the county's network, you know, some river authority. We believe it's best that there's one entity that runs that flood warning system. We need to work out details with David and his team and propose them back, but we think the River Authority is in an excellent position to take on that responsibility. We welcome that challenge. And then the county continues its operations and maintenance for those structural and non-structural mitigation assets. So with that, Judge, Commissioners, that concludes my presentation. My team and I are happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Commissioner Calvert?
Thank you, Judge. Thank you very much, Derek, for the great presentation. Let me just ask you a little bit about the gates. When we look at the infrastructure around the Parambidal area, we saw metal barricades completely ripped, bent like pieces of paper, concrete destroyed. Are these simply, I saw that photo pretty fast. Are these like high alert arms or are these a more substantial structure?
These arms would be located out of the floodway instead of.
They're arms, so.
They're arms, yeah. And they are subject to being damaged and, and being hit by debris, but they'll be located outside the floodway so that it minimizes the opportunity for, for being damaged.
Okay, yeah, I just want to make, you know, I'm glad you're thinking about that. We also had an issue of vandalism out in our east central area where as soon as we put it down, I can't believe somebody stole it, but they did. And you've got security cameras, you've got all that infrastructure there as well as the lighting and the solar lighting is a great thing that can really help because in a lot of these places, especially in the unincorporated county, you don't have the ability to see because there's no lights out there. So I appreciate that as part of this overall package. Let me ask you if what I've learned jives with what you all have seen. When you talk about the larger infrastructure projects, I think I have to make it clear that in my conversations or at least in hearing the Kirk County conversation and the San Antonio Bear County conversation, the, the real solution is not high alert arms and these systems, it's better flood control projects. These are larger infrastructure projects. It's a combination of things. But you can be stuck in, you know, a high water situation in a very fast way if you don't have larger retention and detention. And in the case of the Parambidal corridor, it's my understanding that there was six and six point two inches of rain that fed the two basins, the watershed within a five-square-mile radius within that time period that caused the, the water to be the way it was. But the impervious cover, the fact that you had all this concrete across the Parambidal corridor is what drove that speed of the water as it came, you know, down into the catchment basin of Biddle Creek. And that what is needed then is additional retention, detention, natural vegetative areas like what the county did on Fredericksburg Road at the old Spanish Trail. Soccer fields really is what they are now, that would slow that water lot to go into the ground and, and, and be retained or detained. Does that jive with what you're seeing, let's say, for the Parambidal Creek area?
Yeah, I'll start and then Steve can also jump in. But yeah, I think, you know, gray infrastructure, if you will, the, the big things that you just mentioned, Commissioner, detention, retention basins, that type of thing, have to be any part of a plan, a comprehensive plan based on the, you know, the area that we, we live and serve in. You also mentioned the, you know, more natural and nature-based solutions. Those are important as well. In fact, the county had done a project on Biddle Creek a number of years ago. That is a more vegetated area and you do not see the same damage that we saw in the concrete-lined areas. So I think it's a matter of knowing, you know, what the appropriate tool is to deal with that particular problem at any given time. It's a combination, but it all has to be part of that big, that big discussion, yeah. Still something like thunder, but yeah, absolutely. The transitioning to detention and retention is a big part of it, but that is only a solution. It's bringing back the, the natural stream bank is what we've done, especially on that Biddle Creek where we've added a wide spot in, in the stream. So just upstream of Vicar Road is, it's very channelized and narrow and.
So just upstream of Vicar Road, it's, it's very channelized and narrow, and I think you identified the, the speed of the water going through there. But just downstream of Vicar Road on, on Vital Creek, same stream, same flows, but it got very wide and, and flat in that area. And that allowed the, the stream to slow down, and those, you know, destructive speeds just were eliminated. So it really wasn't even a detention, it was just how the stream was shaped. And that's what we focus on at the River Authority.
So I grew up in the area, I used to ride my bike in the, all along the area, in all the, well, actually, those ditches were not built when I was a kid, they were actually built afterwards. One of the things that we saw, if you go behind the academy in that area around 410, there is a warehouse business that's been abandoned, where they had a metal fence, and that metal fence was completely flat, because the water took the metal bars and just made them flat. But the good part about it being abandoned is that that could potentially be an area for acquisition for a retention, detention, sports, sports park, kind of greenery area, because the, the drainage ditch is 20, 15, I don't know, between 12 and 20 feet. And I, you know, I just happened to go back into my old neighborhood up Perimbitl to see how the water, whether or not it went into the neighborhood, and it did. It was still sitting there some days later after the storm. And that has me concerned for the residents that I represent in the area, that even though there's what I would call a pretty big drainage channel, there is still, without additional flood mitigation around the catchment corridor, there is still high risk that there will be another incident that causes mass flooding in residents and, and other areas. So one of the questions I have, I think a lot of residents want to know, with respect to the cleanup, there's still a lot of rubble there. And when will, I mean, and how, how do you think that impacts our drainage that's existing today? And when will we get that so that the channel flows and isn't obstructed by that rubble? Any thoughts about that?
I will let Steve answer the technical portion of, you know, what, what does that potentially do to the flow? I know that the city of San Antonio has requested $21 million in the legislative ask specifically for debris cleanup in regards to that Vital Creek flood. It did not, it does not reach the FEMA threshold, which is $50 million plus worth of damage. So they're asking a special session for that, to assist with that. I don't have a current timeline on their debris removal efforts. But I think you did bring up a good point, Commissioner. It's not just, you know, infrastructure, but there are also other considerations along, in that same general area, there was a buyout program previously where homeowners, you know, were bought out of their property that were prone to repetitive flooding, and that probably saved, you know, a number of properties and potentially lives during this most recent event. So I think there are a lot of tools, there are things like home elevation programs, there are things like, you know, don't build, obviously, don't build in the floodway, but also, you know, should we look at, what does the 100-year look like? We've seen success in other areas where there's a buffer adjacent to waterways, doesn't have to be super wide, but that can help absorb some of that overflow when a stream hits flood, flood level or a river hits flood level. So again, I think there's a menu of tools that can be applied, but every circumstance and terrain and geography is a little bit different.
Yeah. And as far as, you know, what kind of impacts the, the debris does in the, in the channel, how it affects the water, absolutely causes floodwaters to rise.
Floodwater to rise, right?
Yep, absolutely, yeah. In engineering terms, we'd call it a hydraulic loss, but it's...
Right, absolutely.
The effect is the water gets backed up in those regions. So, and it doesn't have to be construction debris or any of the debris from, that was impacted, like you saw it landed on, on Vicar Drive. But anytime trash makes its way into our streams and, and waterways, every little bit adds up. I mean, how many tons did we pull out last year? I mean, there's tons of trash, makes, makes this play into a watershed, so it's a, it makes, it's not just unsightly, it makes a big impact on floodwaters.
Well, I do want to point out that, you know, I've never seen Texas, the state of Texas, use a rainy day fund for one of our rainiest days, and I find it ironic...
A little bit.
And really, an outrage, that we, we've been through the ice storm, we've been through floods, and we never use our rainy day fund to help local communities. It would be nice, since the feds haven't kicked in on their threshold, that the state could help get this thing taken care of, because that's what it's there for. And it's literally the rainy day. With respect to the trash that's in our waterways, we, we, as an office, struggle all the time with calls where people have drainage ditches that are overflowing with veg... My neighborhood right now, I've been trying to get Union Pacific and the city of San Antonio to clean up of, you know, where the drainage has eight-foot, eight-foot grass, it's just terrible. Because we really worry about, you know, on a street like mine, where it's one way in and one way out, what will happen if we have another rain coming? It's not necessarily a pretty scene, because we are next to a waterway, Sulla Creek, one of your major focus areas here. But the question I have for you is with respect to the booms. We did the litter boom for the first time across several of our waterways. I've often thought about the trash buildup being ameliorated by litter booms. We've never had a real systemic implementation in this community, but I think some others have begun so. Can you give me your thoughts about, I mean, one, from your maintenance standpoint, I'm sure it's a lot easier than what we normally do in the cleanups, but as part of this whole flood mitigation, if we're talking about tons of trash in our, in our waterways, how can litter booms, what would the impact be? Is this something that's ever been measured?
I'm not sure about the measurement. I can, I know that the River Authority has experimented or pilot project with booms in a couple of different places. A lot of it depends on the design of the boom, the location of the boom, and then the type of water that hits it. Oftentimes, you see with boom systems, as soon as you get a really heavy rain, it's, the effect is mitigated because it just all washes over. The other challenge we have is thatch, all the cut grass from mowing that blows in, that is heavier, generally speaking, than any trash that might hit the boom. And so it is sinking it down, dragging it down, and clogging it up, and therefore, it's not being effective for trash. It is something I'm absolutely willing to look at as we explore this further. Again, it's a tool in the tool shed to help mitigate that, but yes, we pull, we pull tens of thousands of pounds from Mission Reach of trash every year. The city, I'm not even sure what they pull from behind Olmos Dam, which is a collection point for a lot of that, those areas north. And that's just in two sort of major areas. That doesn't count Westside Creeks, you know, your neighborhood where you talked about. And so I think when you talk about trash, you know, there, it is a multi-pronged approach there as well. You know, there is an education aspect, which we have done, we have tried to do some of it at the River Authority, when people, you know, don't throw stuff in the bed or your pickup and then drive down the road, because it all blows out. Pick up your dog, pick up after your dog. But it's, you just have to keep talking about it. But I think there's other things too. I mean, we've, we've floated the idea to the city of, you know, how often are they looking at, you know, when do people put out their trashcans? Do they put, you know, there's a window typically 24 hours before pickup, and they can, they have to pick it up within, within 24 hours after pickup. Are they putting it out early? Are they leaving it out? Because oftentimes, you see that those things tip over, dogs, whatever, and then all of a sudden, you have a bunch more stuff in the street. So it, and more constant pickup, are there street sweeper cleaning opportunities in critical areas, which our water quality work has looked at, that make more of a difference than just, you know, doing things on a regular basis? You get more bang for your buck in some places than others. So booms are part of that. We could probably talk about trash, and if you talk to my, my field crews, that is their number-one frustration, because when you're trying to get, you know, a plastic bag or a beer six-pack or whatever it is from a tree that's 12 feet up in the air, it is, and it's up and down the Mission Reach, it is pretty frustrating. So we would love, whether it's part of this discussion or related but separate discussion, to talk more about trash, because it is a problem and it is frustrating.
Well, we're, we're just beginning what I think is a very healthy conversation for the community. I spoke about these issues because they're not often talked about in the press. We need to talk about these multitudes of ways that we combat our flooding and flash flood alley. Let me just say, on behalf of our constituents, thank you to the River Authority, thank you, Derek, thank you for what you do and your team, who work very hard to try to keep our waterways flowing right. So we'll continue to support you and do things to help that effort. Thank you so much.
Thank you, sir.
Commissioner Moody?
Well, thank you, Judge, and thank you for, for being here and presenting, and David for bringing this item forward. Appreciate your comments, Commissioner Calvert. I'm really excited about this conversation. I, I think this is a real opportunity, a moment that we need to seize, both as a county, as a city, as a region. And I hope we do that. You know, as I was, we had a conversation a week ago on this, and I've been giving it a lot of thought, but one of the things I mentioned was, when we talk about flooding and disaster response and everything, what, what are our priorities? It can be property protection and flood mitigation, or it could be, you know, maintaining access, roadways, make low-water crossings, or it can be the protection of human life, right? I think that no one's going to argue with me that our number-one priority should be the protection of human life. And so when we think about the tens of millions, hundreds of millions of dollars, even billions of dollars, that get spent in this space, a lot of times on engineering projects that help in those other categories, more can be done with a higher return on investment when it comes to protecting human life. And I think this project speaks to that specifically. So that $10 million for Bear County seems like really high ROI for protecting human life when it comes to flooding. I do want to just mention a few other things from, from your, from analysis here in your presentation. You know, I think it's important that these tools, and again, I don't want to, I don't want to say that this is the be-all, the end-all solution, but I think it's a huge step forward in the direction we need to go, where we have real-time and predictive analysis around floodwaters before they get there, right? And so we can warn our constituents, our citizens, and make sure we protect them from a situation that could, could cause, you know, a life-threatening situation. So obviously, you talked about the, the HAL system, how that could be tied in with the modeling and, and better information, but, and this goes to kind of the comms argument. As much as I agree with everything you have on the comm sheet, I'd like to see it go further and talk about, and maybe this isn't just the Bear County thing, maybe this is a state effort, right? Where we, we think today about like Amber Alerts, you know, your phone's like, you know, and you can't ignore it. I saw you mentioned Waze and Google Maps, right? And obviously, that feeds in and can say a roadway's flooded. But beyond that, I think there's a more aggressive alert system that we could try to incorporate, geofenced to cellphones that are traveling down a roadway that has predictive analysis, that roadway's going to be covered in less than five minutes, and warning those individuals, you know, that they are risking their lives if they continue down the current road, right? I would love to see us continue to move down that path and, and try to have a, a system so robust and so, you know, tech-savvy. Just a couple other comments, and I'll go ahead and pass, but in here, I do think there's, it's very important that with all the growth and development and increased impervious cover, that this model obviously has to continue to be updated, right? Because as we have hundreds of acres continue to turn into, to concrete, rooftops, streets, we need to continue to update those models, because that flooding risk will change with each and every one of those new roadways. So we need to, to think about that, and also, what are those recurring costs when it comes to going forward and maintaining that model at that high threshold? So I would, I would encourage us to, to include that as we go forward. I think we really need to have that outreach with the city of San Antonio, and hopefully they, they buy into this as well, and this is a partnership where they're aligned on it, and we can, we can go forward together, partner and invest in this space. I don't know exactly where all those conversations stand today, or if any of those have taken place with council, but I would encourage us to, to have those. And then I was going to ask you specifically, around the surrounding counties, have we had any of those discussions, or is that all down the road?
Yes, absolutely. We've, we've already started talking with Wilson, Karns and Goliad. They're, yeah, those are in the River Authority's jurisdiction, and we've already got 95 locations identified for potential water, low-water-crossing gauges, and we've got three already teed up, ready to go out the door. So we're trying to get ILAs in place, so we can get those installed sometime over the next couple of weeks, couple of months. So that's kind of the first thing, those kind of conversations are already happening. As a matter of fact, they started happening April, May, before the storms ever hit. So this is something that's been on our, our focus, our radar for quite some time. So we're trying to branch out into those other counties, just because we know we're in a, kind of a catbird seat, if you will, of being a regional provider. So we've got a really good position on knowing where all of the, the gauges are and what they're capable of, and extending those, those capabilities to the regions that don't have the expertise or, or resources to develop them. So we're, we're already doing, going down that path. And as far as your comment about updating the model, that is something that we do pretty regularly. We're going through a, a model update right now, because of not only impervious cover as a result of development, but rain, rain data is updated every couple of years. It's part of what's called Atlas, Atlas Program, and right now, we're in Atlas 14, 15's coming up soon. But whenever the Atlas 14 came out, we began to update all of our, our flood models. So that's been an ongoing process, and we've done that for, for three of the watershed, through the creeks and streams, and we've got three more to go. So it's all in progress.
And when it comes to the northern counties, or generally northern of Bear County, those are outside of our, you know, legal jurisdiction, but we certainly have discussions with them, and there's been dialogue with Kendall County about our floodplain mapping. We do, we are one of the only two, I don't know, providers in the state that FEMA trusts to handle floodplain mapping on their behalf. It's us and Harris County Flood Control in Houston, but we have a certain boundary on that right now. And Kendall, for example, is interested and has been talking to us about expanding our work into their area via an ILA that FEMA or they would pay for, you know, not with funds within our current jurisdiction. So that dialogue is happening. We talk to, you know, our sister entities frequently, but there's obviously a lot more that needs to happen too.
Commissioner?
Yes.
One of the challenges of this, even this proposal is legally, I can't use county money outside of Bear County.
Right.
So for these other counties, I think that's another partnering opportunity between us, the city and the River Authority, while the legislature's in session, to advocate for the state to provide funding for those counties.
No, I appreciate you bringing that up, because I, I think, you know, we need to engage those counties. We need to engage with ACOG and other water boards, you know, to, to not only understand, maybe other ideas that, that they have or other best practices that we could try to integrate, but how do we advocate together, you know, at the state legislature, or going forward, you know, how are we going to fund some of these projects that have a benefit across county lines, obviously? So I think the more communication we can have on that front, the sooner the better. I'm happy to help be an advocate in Austin. I think that, again, this seems like a really high return on investment project. I would go as far as to say that before we spend another $10 million on a low-water crossing, let's spend the $10 million on making sure that we have this early warning system in place.
Thanks, sir.
Commissioner Rodriguez?
Thank you, Judge. I'm going to be brief, it's been a long day, but this is important. Derek, thank you for being here and, and your patience, because I, I think we were supposed to get to this a little while back. But, you know, let me ask David, because I know, first of all, let me acknowledge, David, kind of coming up with the, the brainstorming with the judge on this really important initiative, and, you know, regardless of the, the money, it's, it's worth it because of the... and, you know, regardless of the money, it's worth it because of the, what's at stake in saving lives. But speaking of the money, do we have funding identified yet? Is it going to be phased? Are we talking about, I saw roughly a $50 million price tag for the entire package. Tell me a little bit about what you're thinking with the funding source.
So it won't be $50 million from the county because 32 of it's for outside of Bear County.
Right.
It could be 20 million for the county, but to be honest with you, I'm hoping the city wants to partner with us.
Yeah.
And pay for their 11 million. So what the actual recommended motion is to direct me to address funding in the upcoming budget.
Gotcha, okay, that makes sense.
But one way or another, I want Derek to walk out of this meeting and get to work.
Yeah.
So you're going to have your money, one way or another.
And when you say county, I'm assuming, obviously, you're talking about the unincorporated areas, but the suburban cities are going to need help too.
That's correct.
Yeah, so I think of Leon Valley, which historically has pretty bad flooding in my precinct. So again, I don't want to belabor the point, important initiative, it is a core function of what county government should be doing in terms of flood control and protecting lives. So I appreciate very much your work on this. Look forward to getting an update down the road, and if there's not been a motion made yet, I'll make a motion that we direct staff to move forward with this.
Motion by Commissioner Rodriguez, second by Commissioner Clay Flores. Commissioner Clay Flores?
Yeah, I just want to thank David Smith for your innovation in putting this together and reaching out to them to put it together. And instead of next-generation flood warning system, I think it should be called the David Smith Flood Warning System. We need a good laugh, it's been a long day. But this is vitally, I am serious, that's what I'm going to call it, me and my constituents in our precinct, it is the David Smith Flood Warning System. So this is really, really important, and I appreciate that despite, you know, we're in budget season, everyone's not going to get what they want, but this is really important to put the funding here, so I'm happy to second. Thank you.
All right, we have a motion. Any further comment, question? Let me again thank Derek and your team, Jim Campbell, the board. We've had a great, great, excellent relationship since I've become county judge, and you've kind of brought me up to speed in all the flooding drainage issues and the projects that you have worked with in regards with the county, especially Judge Wolf, Commissioner Lizondo with that San Pedro Creek, which obviously is a tremendous success. So again, let me echo my thanks to David Smith and his leadership and his team for bringing this matter. I think what I'd like to just conclude today's comment is just, let's not forget, what was it, June 12th, the Battle Creek flooding and 13 victims?
Yes, sir.
That could have been avoided had we, hopefully, had a warning system. I believe Sarah, San Antonio River Authority, you stepped up to do an immediate independent assessment, which has helped the seating county figure out what needs to be done. What has transpired after that, obviously, was the July 4th flooding up in Kirk County in the Hill Country, which had much, much more devastation and victims, and the review has been quite brutal. I will tell you that that review has reminded me what my primary job as county judge is, and that's to protect this county. There's a lot of other things I have to do to show up and do things or preside over meetings, but I better damn well make sure that if there's any weather events or catastrophic events or anything in this county, I better be up and at them, and being asleep and, or being out of town is not going to probably give me much excuse. The public will have a demand on me as to why I didn't react in the way I did. So what is truly empowering about the idea that David has brought out and Derek, y'all have embraced, is the fact that this seems to be, and I'm wanting to really see how this thing's going to work, but this really gets to be more preventive in addition, it's really pre-proactive, so to speak, that if we can get these models and these gauges down, and obviously, we have an existing system in effect now, so there's some, we got to go fix things that have not been fixed perhaps in a while, we need to upgrade, get the latest software, we've got to get the right vendors in, and I know that San Antonio River Authority, with your expertise, we're going to have the state-of-the-art, we're going to have the right system, the right software, the right vendor, to make sure that we have a structure that will last many years and not just go out of date, so to speak. The other part that we didn't touch upon, but has been discussed in meetings, especially with me, is that we hope to have a future discussion of a regional, and what we hope is this is one piece towards a regional perspective of how we can incorporate our surrounding counties, especially our rural county, that are obviously definitely impacted by whatever watershed issues we have, or whatever remediation we do will affect other communities, and we need to partner up, and I'm looking forward to that conversation. And Sarah, that's well within your purview and jurisdiction of having adjoining counties to be joining that. So I want to encourage you and your board to include our regional partners, especially our county judges out there, to say, hey, we want to also be part of the solution, and then looking towards whatever, the federal funding, state funding, that can help supplement. I believe, David, you have basically, so that the public understands, we'd had a big discussion earlier about some big projects that we have now made a decision, but I want to remind the public, and I want to remind the people here in the court, that we're still taking care of business. And this is really something that I hope that we can partner with the City of San Antonio, Commissioner Moody, and that, obviously, but this is a reminder that city residents, city taxpayers are also county residents and county taxpayers. And I think sometimes city-county kind of gets, we sometimes get caught up in saying, we're not responsible for City of San Antonio because that's the City of San Antonio. We are stepping up to make sure that all residents of Bear County, including the City of San Antonio, including the suburban cities, included the unincorporated areas, are all part of this next-gen warning system, and for that, I'm eternally grateful. Thank you very much. I call for a vote. Commissioner Moody?
Just parliamentary inquiry. What is the vote, the motion before us?
So the motion was to direct staff to identify funding this budget cycle for implementation.
Okay, I guess, and my question was just around the specificity of this deal versus, obviously, we want to support this sort of movement, but I think there were conversations about like opportunities to add on to it and explore further, so I assume that's kind of included here for staff to look at details and potential opportunities?
Outside of what was presented, you mean? I don't know if that's, I was just thinking, what was presented, the motion was to direct staff to look for funding sources for those ideas. I don't know what you're talking about outside of that.
Can I just ask a question?
Sure.
So, and maybe you can just address it. Obviously, this was turned around very quickly, right? And to me, I saw this as a first draft in terms of what we think makes sense and what we'd like to do. I'm not trying to undermine it in any way, but I'm not sure, you know, whether we're 100% confident that this is the plan, we want to make sure it's in the budget, versus this is the direction we want to go, but there may be other things we want to tweak and continue to play with as we go forward here into the budget season. That's just what I was trying to get at.
I mean, I called it a roadmap on purpose. Yes, there are skills that need to be worked through that I think are at this, you know, many of those are at the staff level, and we've worked with David and his team on that. But yeah, I mean, we are continuing to refine this as we go along. You know, we know, we, prior to the floods of June and July, we had a update to our that we will be able to come back to both the county and the city and say, if you are considering future bond projects for large infrastructure programs, here is our recommendation on how you prioritize limited dollars. That's just one example, but, you know, the team has been meeting, not daily, but pretty darn close, to flesh this out, you know, develop the schedule, it's a, you know, there is a flow chart of do this before this, accompanying schedule. So all of that is underway. I don't know everything yet because we are still looking, you know, what do we want to benchmark ourselves against? Because we want to be, you know, best in class, best in the country. So that is all being figured out, but we feel pretty confident that this is the right start. And after that, or in addition to that, you know, as discussions between the court and David go, but, you know, there's some things in here we regard as critical to keep the system, to get it to the next level. And then there are other things that we would love to talk about doing more, whether it's trash, as Commissioner Calvert talked about, or other things, but this is a bigger discussion, but this gets the ball moving, in our opinion.
Does that answer your question, Commissioner Moody?
I believe so, just that this is a roadmap, it's laid out, but this is directing staff to find the roadmap going forward.
So just to be clear, what I'm going to recommend to commissioners, of course, is at a minimum, we are going to fund the cost for the suburban cities and the unincorporated area. But what I'm telling Derek is whether another partner steps in to fund the 11 million for the city or not, I'll find the 11 million because they're county residents too. So I'm taking the mission initially 10, but if it needs to be the full 21, I'll do it.
I'm sorry, how long have we spent on this item? Does anyone know about an hour? We just spent an hour talking about how important this is, how no one will disagree with me, it's important to save lives, and now we're going to talk about, I mean, we need to pass it, right? We're not going to wait for the state, we need to pass it. Hopefully, the city will come on board, hopefully, we can get reimbursement from the state. But I thought we just spent an hour talking about how important it is, and we're going to do it.
With that, we'll call the vote.
Well, I just don't know why we're talking.
We've got more discussion then. Commissioner Moody?
Well, I'm just not sure where the comments are coming from. We're obviously supportive here, we're trying to just make sure that we take the right steps forward so we can protect our citizens in Bear County. I think that's clear.
Okay. Anybody else? Calling for the vote. All those in favor of the motion by Commissioner Rodriguez, second by Commissioner Clay Flores?
Second.
Or second by, who was it? Commissioner Moody? Elizabeth, who was it? I just want to make sure. Just get everybody to the motion.
All right.
It's getting late in the day, guys. Aye. Any opposed? Any abstention? Motion carries. Just want a reminder, Sarah and county, we have called for a press conference at the conclusion. Don't know what time that will be. We're getting there, we are coming around the curve, so to speak, so I would want to invite commissioners to please, if you want to participate, we're going to, we'll have that press conference back in our conference room, all right? So with that, let us move on.
Thank you, Judge. Thank you, commissioners.
Forty-six, we're going back to consent for those matters that were pulled. Our first consideration is Agenda Item 37, Adoption of the Texas Indigenous Defense Commission's Improvement Grant Program Resolution for Year Three FY 2526 for the Public Defender Padilla Plus Division, formerly known as the Non-Citizen Unit. Three funding, year three funding was awarded $232,328 in grant funding, $232,328 in county MATH funds, for a total project cost of $464,565 for a term beginning in October 1, 2025 to September 30, 2026. Hello, Ms. Melon.
Good afternoon, Judge, commissioners.
Well, let me just start. Commissioner Moody, you pulled, is there questions or comments, and then this is hopefully addressed.
Just fairly brief comments, and this is one of the grants that starts out with the state and then transitions to county ownership, correct?
Correct.
So again, I'm just going to be brief because we've talked about this before, and I know on the public defender side, there's a little more ambiguity around services, but the Padilla Plus name, to me, stands out because fully support the constitutional protections of everyone in our criminal justice system, period. protections that come with that.
Correct.
But I don't support anything beyond that. That's a political decision that this court has made in the past, but I'll highlight that neither do the vast majority of taxpayers in this country. And I'm just going to highlight a couple stats. I wrote an op-ed in the Express News several months ago, but a recent survey conducted by AP Center for Public Affairs Research found that 83% of Americans believe that the U.S. should prioritize deporting illegal immigrants who have committed violent crimes. Separate poll by the New York Times found that nearly 87% of Americans held those same opinions. In the Texas legislative session, House Bill 1554 passed the State Affairs Committee, a vote to ban the practice that we're discussing here today when it comes to using taxpayer dollars for legal services that are not constitutionally protected for non-citizens. I fully believe that ultimately, the state will pass a ban, but until then, it seems like our county will continue to fund a policy that the vast majority of taxpayers do not agree with, which I believe that this Padilla Plus grant and the program that it creates falls into that category, which is why I won't support it as I haven't previously supported it, but I'll just rest there.
I don't think you need to, can I speak?
Yes.
Are you done? Okay. Do you want to add anything?
I don't need to add much. I would just try to reassure you again that right now, we're public defenders, we do what's mandated by the Constitution, and if we weren't doing it as the law stands right now, someone would have to do it, which is represent non-citizens. And right now, at least, we're fortunate enough to have the Texas Indigenous Defense Commission, at least in part, pay for some of that right now. I understand the grant will run out, and then we'll have to make a decision if we're going to maintain the unit, but right now, it's mandated by the Constitution, and that's all we're doing. Commissioner?
And Judge, I would just, I'm certain there's probably an economic argument that would maybe appeal to you, Commissioner Moody, but to me, this is about helping vulnerable citizens, whether they're here temporarily, or basically, it's the humane thing to do to help people who are probably at their most vulnerable, so I'm going to make a motion to approve, Judge.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Rodriguez, second by Commissioner Clay Flores. Any further discussion? Commissioner Moody?
Quick rebuttal. Obviously, there's the economic argument, but no, and specifically, the reference was to citizens. This unit was previously called the Non-Citizen Unit, so it is not specifically for citizens. And to your point, Ms. Melon, yes, as I started my comments, I fully support the constitutional requirements that we have when it comes to criminal defense, but as the new name suggests, Padilla Plus, what is included in the plus? Because I don't support funding for additional services, and as I said, political decision, not a decision based on constitutional requirements, in my opinion, and I'll leave it there.
Ms. Melon, there was no question, all right? I'm calling for a vote. All those in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed?
No.
Motion carries. Thank you, Ms. Melon. All right, we're taking up the other agenda item, Pool 46. Commissioner Clay Flores, I'm teeing you up. Ratification of grant application, acceptance award from the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development for the solicitation entitled Community Project Funding FY 24 in an amount of $750,000 with no MATH requirement, and acceptance of funding upon award to provide for the Americans with Disability Act ADA modification renovations to the South San Civic Center at 503 Lovett Street, San Antonio, Texas 78211. Let me pass to Commissioner Clay Flores.
Yeah, so it's unfortunate, you know, I passed this hours ago, and because of all the political gaming, we're still here. People keep telling me I look good, thank you, but I am recovering from colon cancer, and I am exhausted. So I have stayed so that I can, since I pulled this, had I known it was going to go this long, I would not have pulled it. to go this long, I would not have pulled it. So I pulled it, and then I have to leave because I'm exhausted, and I'm recovering from colon cancer. So I only pulled it to make a motion for approval to thank Congressman Castro for working with me to get this funding for this county civic center on the south side to improve especially. And sometimes they have fallen because they are in wheelchairs and they are in walkers. So thank you so much, Ken, for your work on this. Please keep me abreast of when it's starting and how it's going, because we need to do this not just for South Sands Civic Center, but the rest of our civic centers.
Yes, ma'am.
There's a motion by Commissioner Clay Flores. Second by Commissioner Rodriguez. Any further discussion? All those in favor, signal by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? Any abstention? Motion carries. All right, Larry, we have now completed consent, correct? Okay. All right, let us now go to individual items. First up is 83, Presentation, Discussion, Appropriate Action Regarding Authorization Negotiated Agreement Between Bear County, University Health System, Provide Behavioral Health Services, and the Justice Intake and Assessment Annex, GIA. Contracted services will include staffing costs related to LMSW positions, one LMSW supervisor, four discharge expeditors, and costs related to administrative functions, including the Epic Electronic Medical Record System. Dr. Guerrero.
Good afternoon, court members. I am Dr. Andrea Guerrero, Director of Public Health for Bear County. You've just introduced my item. A little bit about the history of the GIA. The GIA is the Justice Intake and Assessment Annex. So just for context, I know all of you have been at the Bear County Jail. The GIA is the portion of the jail that begins at the Sallyport and ends when a person is, you know, following magistration and is bonded out, and the GIA, or, or gets sent into, upstairs into the main jail. The GIA opened in December of 2018, and it was really in response to ensuring that we, Bear County, are adhering to Article 1622 of the Texas Code of Criminal Procedure, which addresses how folks are assessed for mental health issues when they are arrested. That Article 1622 was amended following the Sandra Bland Act that was enacted in 2017. And so the GIA was, was largely in response to that. In the GIA, there are mental health clinicians that provide coverage 24/7 every day of the year. And the goal, really, the bottom line, that the goal of having mental health assessments and having these clinicians in the GIA is to divert qualified persons to mental health and substance use treatment. When we say qualified persons, these are people that have been arrested, who are accused of low-level charges, who are eligible for PR bonds, really the same population that we have with the PICU unit. The current process, and really, we're just, we're talking about, so the GIA, as I said, covers a long process of someone that is brought into custody. But for the purposes of this presentation, we're really talking about just the process for assessing someone for mental health issues, when they are in substance use issues when they come into the jail. So the first encounter with these mental health screening questions usually happens with law enforcement, from whatever jurisdiction that person is arrested, where they ask for mental health screening questions. Then when they're taken into custody at the Bear County Sheriff's Office, they also ask these questions and could be flagged at that time for CCQ, which just means continuity of care, meaning that we need to take a closer look at this person to see if they need services or at least a mental health assessment. While they're going through the booking process, the Center for Healthcare Services is the current provider of these mental health assessments, and they are the ones that provide the clinicians to do the mental health assessments currently. ACOG is also present in the GIA, and they perform IDD screenings and attempt diversion for those individuals, which are different population, from mental health and substance use. And then finally, University Health System is present in the GIA as well, and they provide medical and physical assessments for folks who are arrested, they are present there in the booking area. It should be noted also that University Health is a behavioral health provider for folks who are booked into the, into the main jail and who aren't released from the GIA. So back in October 2023, this court approved a study to be conducted by Dr. Alexander Testa, who is a professor and researcher at UT Health Science Center Houston. And the purpose of that evaluation was to create, or was to provide an assessment of the efficiency of the GIA process and to make recommendations. So from April 2024 through June 20, June 2024, Dr. Testa and his team were physically present in the GIA. They watched the process, and they watched the entire process from booking through magistrations through release. And so as I said, this presentation is to just focus on the mental health assessment, particularly Chapter Four of his report, which was presented to the Board in February of 2025. So earlier this year, Dr. Testa came and presented his findings and his recommendations. So we look at some of the data related to mental health and substance use diversions going back to 2019. So this would be like a year after the, the GIA opened, and mental health assessments and substance use assessments were being done. You'll see that the total annual diversion, so the total number of times a person was successfully diverted into treatment was, 2019 was 565, and with each subsequent year, 394, 4043, 526, and you'll see a decline over the last two years. So if we look, just take a deeper dive just into the data from last year, so this would be FY 2024, the total number of assessments that were completed in the GIA were nearly 19,000. Thirty-two, thirty-two hundred, almost 3,300 were suicide assessments, and then nearly 16,000 were full assessments. Of that number, 481 diversions were requested. Now, the total number of diversions that were actually completed, approved, because there are any number of reasons why a diversion wouldn't be approved, the magistrate doesn't approve it, they don't qualify, so the total number of diversions was 278. Of those, 116 were emergency detentions. CHCS, the provider in the GIA, diverted 105 to their, to their services, and then continuing services, which are outpatient, are 42. For substance use diversion, CHCS completed 15 substance use diversions during that year. So if we look at Dr. Testa's report, and often, one of the criticisms of research or an evaluation of reports or assessments that are conducted like this, the criticism is that it's just another report that will sit on the wall, I mean, sit on the shelf, and that we won't really, you know, take heed of some of the things, the findings and the recommendations in that report. So we have a real opportunity here to, to really heed Dr. Testa's findings and to understand why it is that these diversions are not what we would expect them to be. His finding was that the system as it exists now is what he described as fragmented, that there are a lot of players, a system that doesn't necessarily run in a linear fashion, where it's not just, okay, now you're ready for the next step, now you're ready for the next step. Sometimes you're interacting with all of those entities, including sheriff's office, including pretrial, in, in, not always in the, in the same order. And that this process can lead to errors in communication amongst those different entities. It could delay treatment for folks who really need mental health services immediately or in a timely fashion. And it can create some inconsistencies with how these folks are treated. And it can also contribute to a decrease in appropriate care for people who are arrested, which in addition places a burden on BSCO staff, can cause delays in classification, and other, other issues that, that can, it can create in the, in the jail environment. So the recommendation that, that we are making, based on Dr. Testa's input, his report, and in consultation with his team, is to integrate this process for conducting mental health and substance use assessments under one provider. So the provider that is currently there that is doing the physical and medical assessments is University Health System, and they have the capacity and the functionality to conduct mental health and substance use assessments, and then to refer discharge to appropriate care in the outpatient setting. Additionally, the introduction of a substance use screener in the intake process that would also be administered by civilian staff at UHS. The current implementation for IDD assessment that is conducted by ACOG is operating appropriately. It's meeting expectations. It's a slightly different population than, than the mental health and substance use population, so we are not recommending a change in that provider. What will this accomplish? Our priority is to the folks who have been arrested and to provide appropriate care, assessment and care. And so we really want to make sure that we're identifying those folks as early as possible and providing appropriate treatment when they are booked into the jail and then when they are released. We feel like the screening will help do that in a more timely manner, and then it'll have more coordinated treatment under one provider. And additionally, UHS already, since it already exists there in the jail, they have an EMR. It's called EPIC, Electronic Medical Record, which could also link these folks to services in the community at any of the UHS facilities that provide these services. So currently, this is the line item budget that exists to fund these services. You'll see that the staffing piece, the clinicians, is just one part of the line item budget. Our recommendation only deals with that piece, to just have UHS take over the staffing portion so that they can conduct these mental health assessments. The rest of these services are provided by CHCS, and you'll see in the recommended motion that we would like for you to direct us staff to also work with CHCS to ensure that these services will still be provided by CHCS, just under a different contract, so really just kind of separating out that staffing piece. This is the proposed budget. You'll see that UHS is proposing to move to eight clinicians, as opposed to the 11 that were previously budgeted. One supervisor and four discharge expeditors. Discharge expeditors are really just like navigators that can help make appointments and help people get discharged more efficiently so that clinical staff can do clinical things. And annual administrative costs to, to maintain EPIC, which is their EMR, $200,000. So the total budgeted is a little over 1.2 million. So again, additional considerations, even with this change, we, we, Bear County Public Health, Bear County, as an entity, would still like to work with CHCS to provide all of these outpatient services outside of the jail, that they would continually, continue to offer these community services for diverted persons, that they would also, you know, help with coordination of diversion appointments on a 24-hour referral line, continue to assist with course-ordered SB 1326 circumstances, and continue to provide all services once someone is released from the GIA, as outlined in, you know, in a revised contract for people receiving PR bonds, including intake appointments and transportation when it's appropriate. So a recommended motion at this time is to authorize, and to ask you to authorize our department to negotiate with UHS to serve as the contractor to provide behavioral health services at the GIA, and to direct us to work with CHCS on a revised scope of work related to the other outpatient services.
All right, Dr. G, let me ask you to step aside. We have a citizen to be heard. Allison Greer Francis, you have three minutes.
I'll hurry. I know it's been a long day. Good afternoon, Judge Commissioners. I'm Allison Greer Francis. I work for CHCS, the local mental health authority in Bear County in San Antonio. I want to take you back a little bit, and I'm going to focus on you. 2017, Senate Bill 292 was passed. It was part of an omnibus group of bills that Representative Foreprice wrote in response to the Select Committee on Mental Health that was, that was formed by Speaker Joe Strauss. And boy, do we miss both of those guys. Part of Senate Bill 292 was originally House Bill 12. It was for justice-involved individuals. It looked like it wasn't going to pass, and in the last second, it was amended onto Senate Bill 292. And that became the basis of the jail diversion continuum that we know in Bear County. Initially, it included ACT and FACT teams. Those are those community-based intensive programs for individuals with severe mental illness, with SMI. It also included the assessors at GIA that Dr. G was, was talking about. And initially, it funded a crisis stabilization unit that was first at the NIX Hospital. It closed. Then we moved it to Texas Vista. That closed. HHSC said you can take those dollars and you can have 15 mental health inpatient beds. So that's what the continuum looks like now. It's the ACT and FACT team, it's GIA assessors, and it's those 15 inpatient beds. Part of SB 292 also required a one-to-one match, a one-to-one dollar match, and your general fund contract is the match for 292. So if you decrease the amount of the general fund contract, and I know that it looks like a cost-saving measure, you will put the entire jail diversion program at risk. Because we no longer, and when I say we, I don't mean us, I mean the city, the county, all of the local hospitals, your strat partners, all of those people were involved in this initial conversation. You put that continuum of care at risk because we no longer have the same dollar match that we need for Senate Bill 292 programs.
Thank you.
Questions, anybody?
No, no questions on citizen being heard. I'll, 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 let me yield, so.
Okay.
Ms. Greer Francis, a step back. Let me ask the, the court to now open it up for discussion. Commissioner Rodriguez.
Thank you, Allison. I don't have a question for you, but thank you. I'm trying to work the cobwebs out of my brain. That was my last session in 2017.
That's right.
But, you know, I wonder if you've had that conversation with anybody at UH, or Dr. Guerrero, you have any response to any of those concerns that might have been brought up? I mean, I'm supportive of this, but I want to make sure that we are not at risk of potentially being out of compliance or losing any type of state support.
Well, we have not had this conversation. I had not been informed prior, when we did speak to CHCS last week to let them know that this item would be coming to court, but I haven't been informed specifically of which of our services are being used as that one-to-one match. I do know of the requirement for the one. Which part of our general fund contract or any other funding is used as a match for that?
Okay.
To that end, our priority at this point is, you know, looking at the, the data, which is much lower than expected, and looking at recommendations for how to effectively divert people in the jail, and that is what our recommendation is based on.
Commissioner?
Yes.
I would just point out, you're still spending 1.2 million with UHS.
Well, right, and so the balance, the total amount budgeted for this contract is 4.8 billion dollars.
Right.
We're recommending to, to transition about 1.2. So the balance of that, we would still negotiate with CHCS to provide for the other line item budgets that are currently in.
What I'm saying is the community is still spending the money, you're just pointing at a different agency for the match.
So I guess, tell me a little bit about the transition. What does that look like? I mean, is it, is it going to take place over a few weeks, a few months? I mean, what do you envision? Because it sounds like some of the conversations are, are still relatively fresh with CHCS on this.
Right. We have not been able to negotiate with UHS to see what their, what the process would be, but if you approve this item today, then we would. But our fiscal year ends September 30, so that would be our deadline to make sure that we're ensuring a smooth transition.
Yeah, and I, I think the, the main concern is just the, the continuum of care, right?
Absolutely.
That's the bottom line. But, but if there's an opportunity, I mean, it sounds like, I mean, we, we, CHCS is still a significant partner, this is a piece of that, and like I said, I'm supportive of it, but I want to make sure that you guys are continuing to, to visit so that there's nothing that falls through the cracks in the transition, if that makes sense.
Yes, the goal would be to not have a gap in service in, in any component of this process.
Okay. Thank you, Judge.
Commissioner Calvert?
Thank you. So typically, UHS doesn't really enter that mental health space. They have told the court that they don't like to enter it because of the lack of compensation in that space. So how did we get, how did we get to them being the specialists in this space? Do they hire outside, or maybe bring inside people in? I mean, how, how is that working?
Right, so I, and I mentioned that at the beginning of the, of the presentation, is that UHS is our current provider of mental health services once someone has been booked it upstairs into the main jail. So they, they are, they provide medication, they, you know, we have regular contact with them about behavioral health issues, have done some diversions themselves, are sort of ad hoc when it's necessary. So this is a space that they're comfortable transitioning to.
I think what you're referring to is that if it's dealing with medication, you're dealing with someone with a degree or something in psychiatry. dealing with someone with a degree or something in psychiatry, which can happen with multiple entities, but that doesn't make their institution a mental health institution.
Right, and I, so we have had these conversations and we would not have moved forward with this proposal had we not at least had a preliminary conversation to say, is this a function that you can perform? And they are moving into a mental health space. Like, I think we, the third floor of the new building and the public health building will be specifically for behavioral health, so it's a space that they're moving into. And additionally, they have, I'm sorry, I lost my train of thought. They, I'm sorry, I lost my train of thought.
Okay, I think the larger issue is the relationship with the county to the Center for Healthcare Services. It's not been where it should be, and and that's unfortunate. I think it started with our delay of payments and the frustration of having to take out loans in order to make contracts work. I'm sure that's still happening. At least, that's what probably a dozen other contractors have told me, including in the mental health space, who are subcontractors. Stop throwing shade at the Center for Healthcare Services for whatever personal disagreements are happening and that we can work together because they are the Bear County Mental Health Agency, and they really should be in that lane and in that niche. We obviously have three new hospitals, multiple new clinics that UHS has to staff for now this. Allison, in terms of making and bridging the divide, how do you, I mean, you, you all are not looking to have these funds taken away. You you want to make this work.
So a couple of points there. Yes, Commissioner, you are right. UH does not provide treatment for severe mental illness, for SMI. They don't. They don't provide outpatient treatment either. We would like to make this work. Obviously, our biggest concern is the match because of that continuum of care. It funds the jail diversion program. That's our biggest concern. And according to my, our CEO, the substituting us for UH will not satisfy that requirement. But to answer you directly, UH does not provide SMI treatment. They're they are not currently in that business, nor are they in the business of outpatient treatment, providing outpatient treatment.
Well, this was court law, and I were setting this case before me. I'd put the two entities into a room to work it out and mediate and come back with a better solution. So I would move to table this until something can be worked out because I think the whole mental health community is watching.
Right.
And I don't think anybody is, I don't know, it just doesn't seem like it's, it seems a little half-baked.
Right.
All right, there's a point of order, stop. There's a motion to table. Is there a second?
Second, but I will, I won't have questions.
Okay, there's a motion, a second to table. Commissioner Moody?
I'm going to reserve my vote here. I, but I hate being put like in the spot, right? And I feel like I'm now a black road, Joe, black robe judge, trying to interpret decisions of fact and, you know, understand, one person's telling us one thing, somebody else is telling us another. I don't know what to believe. So Allison, can you speak to specifically what you're saying about the match and what that would do to Bear County, or is that only a concern for CHCS?
It is Bear County.
Okay.
So that are the service, those are the jail diversion programs that we provide for Bear County. That is not, not just us, that's right. It affects the local hospitals, the judiciary, so assisted outpatient treatment, that court order treatment, that would be affected. We have a jail-based competency restoration program, that would be affected, so it's Bear County residents. It's not just us.
I still don't know what that means.
So it's...
In terms of the match, what's the match requirement? Now, now you're losing, I guess...
It's a one, it's a one-to-one match.
4.8 million, so what does that mean?
So we have to match...
We have a requirement to match what?
So when I say we, I mean the crisis collabor, I mean the partners. It's not just CHCS, it's UH, it's the hospitals, it's everybody who put in, who has a service or dollar match that is required. That that is what's required for Senate Bill 292.
Commissioner, just one thing. She's not losing 4.8 million under this. She's losing about 1.1 million.
Right.
We're continuing to contract with her for all the rest of that list of services on the slide, all the outpatient stuff.
We don't have a 2024 contract. We don't even have that, I mean, a 2025 contract. We don't even have that. And our fiscal year expires at the end of this month, so.
Again, you know, I don't, I don't want to upset our, our business and our timeline here, but, I mean, again, I just don't feel like I know what information to to lean on here. I'm getting different information. I'd like to have staff just come back next week. We're going to meet next week, and we could revisit this, and hopefully, everybody can come together and talk about the specific impact on the county, and we can put it on one or two slides.
Yep.
And then we can know what's fact-based, we can cite it specifically.
Yes, sir. And we'd be happy to provide a briefing before that meeting as well.
Judge?
Go ahead.
Commissioner Calvert?
Judge, I have a real concern over what we're talking about. We're talking about mental health assessments for people in jail, and we're talking about proper experience with severe mental illness. And so, you know, getting this right is very important for public safety.
Yes.
For public safety. So if it, if, if, if this is half-baked, you know, it's not going to be a good impact. And when you say the impact to our partners, Court, that is cost in hospital stays and all kinds of other impacts in the community that have to be evaluated as to whether we're ready. Maybe they're ready, maybe they're not. It's not exactly clear to me. But what has been made clear to me in the past is the aversion to dealing in this space. That concerns me. That concerns me. I know there's been a deal brokered, but it is, there's some gaps. There appears to be some service gaps here, and we need to, I think we just need to, you know, work with those who are specialists in particular areas and move forward and check our egos at the door. That's what, that's, that's what I'd say. Thank you, Judge.
Commissioner, oh, hold on.
Thank you, Judge.
Commissioner Rodriguez, we got a motion on the floor. It's a motion to table. We did have a prior motion, a motion that, no?
No, we didn't.
So a motion to table is on the floor.
And, and look, I, I'm okay if we want to delay it. I'm also comfortable with staff's recommendation, but it sounds like there's been a lack of communication. I know there's also some, you know, history with what's happening with payments and things like that, so that is a help. But I will also say that, at least since I've been here, 2019, I know university health has been providing mental health services because we had that discussion with them. I know when Judge Wolf was here, we put some additional, I think it was five or six million dollars in my first budget, seven million in my first budget specifically for mental health. So there's expertise there, but it sounds like maybe there just needs to be a little bit more communication. And so I'm okay if we want to just bring it back, but, but, you know, I'm also comfortable with staff's recommendation. You guys work it out.
Right.
And we'll figure it out next, next week if we can.
Commissioner, we found out about this last Friday.
Ms. Francis, stop.
Thank you, sir.
We got, I got to call for a vote, unless I have any further questions or comment by commissioners.
Just one more comment. So I don't have any, any issue with us moving this contract, even if it means somebody's going to be disappointed. If it makes sense for Bear County, I say we do it. But obviously, I'm hearing for the first time, like, concerns that are being raised in court that I think county staff needs to provide, like, rebuttal to and make sure that we're all on the same page in order to make that decision accurately with confidence. So I stand by pushing it a week.
All right, I'm calling for a vote. All those in favor of the motion to table this agenda item 83? All those in favor, signal by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? Any abstention? Motion now. The question I have, when do we table it? We have a meeting set for next week. Is that, can we put it, Mr. Smith, Thomas?
I'd say we do the 19th.
The 19th?
Yeah. Give it a little more time.
19th. So staff, you're instructed to put agenda item 83 on the 19th meeting. Y'all have a good day. Okay, as we move along, we have taken care of agenda item 84, correct, Kate? So now we take up the late file. Can I get a, a, a group, or what is it? A motion to accept the late file for agenda item 85, 86, and 87? Is there a motion to take them up?
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner Rodriguez, second by Commissioner Moody. All those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstention? Motion carries. Let us now take up agenda item 85. A, Approval of Request from Commissioner, come Commissioner, County Judge Peter Sakai to point the following individual to listed board and commission for the term specified. Bear County Analysis Authority, Harold Oliver, date of appointment 8/5/2025, term expired 8/5/27. He is replacing Robert A. Wehrmeyer. Is there a motion to...
Motion approved.
Motion by Commissioner Rodriguez, second by Commissioner Calvert. Any further discussion? All those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstention? Motion carries. Let us now take up agenda item 86A. Approve...
Yes, Judge. If the court had any questions, but this particular firm and the attorney is helping us navigate an issue with the Department of Labor. We received notification that they were investigating an issue raised by an employee complaint, and disagreement is just for that.
Motion approved. Motion by Commissioner Rodriguez, second by Commissioner Moody. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstention? Motion carries. We'll take up item 87A. I presume for purposes of clarification, Mr. Roberson, we'll take up all three together or do we need to take them up separately?
Judge, they've been agendized individually, so I would take them up.
Okay, we'll take them up individually. Discussion appropriate action related to granting, to approval of appropriate action regarding the following item. We'll take up first, the obligate unexpended program year 2023 emergency solutions grant funds in the amount of $30,947.30 from San Antonio Metropolitan Ministries, Inc., San Ministries. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner Rodriguez, second by Commissioner Calvert. Any further discussion? All those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstention? Motion carries. Second motion, or second agenda item, proposed reprogramming action utilizing unexpended program year 2023 emergency solutions grant funds from San Antonio Metropolitan Ministries, Inc., San Ministries, in amount of $30,947.30 to Catholic Charities Archdiocese of San Antonio, Inc., Catholic Charities. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner Rodriguez, second by Commissioner Calvert. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstention? Motion carries. Item three, execution of program year 2023 subrecipient agreement between Bear County and Catholic Charities Archdiocese of San Antonio, Catholic Charities, in amount of $30,947.30 for the administration of the ESG-funded homelessness prevention program. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner Rodriguez, second by Commissioner Calvert. Any further discussion? All those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Mr. Raina, do you need to have, do you need to say anything? Thank you, Robert. That was a great presentation. Thank you, thank you. Short, concise. That's the way I like it. That's the way it should be.
Take the rest of the day off, Robert. Take the rest of the day off.
All right. Mr. Roberson, I believe the last part is to go to our second executive session.
Yes, Judge, but just for your, um, 88 and 89A, I mean, any...
Okay, so 88, agenda item is being dropped. Is that the request by the DA's office?
Yes, Judge, so it's 88 and 89A. You don't have to read those items. The only remaining items are 89B and 90.
And I believe, and then what that means is it doesn't look like any action items, so from executive, we should come out, reopen, and go to motion to adjourn, I believe, correct?
Correct, Judge.
All right, and then we have a press conference after this, Commissioner, so let us now go to executive session. Where's my notes? Let's see. The court will now convene, the time is now 3:58. We'll convene in executive session. Executive session's item may be discussed and acted upon if appropriate in an open section. We will have under section 55107, one consultation with attorney for advice regarding B, a matter in which the duty of the attorney to governmental body under the Texas Disciplining Rules of Professional Conduct of the State Bar of Texas clearly comes conflicts with chapter 551 of Texas Government Code, specifically, one, legal issues related to the collective bargaining agreement with the Deputy Sheriff's Associate of Bear County entered into pursuant chapter 174 of the Local Government Code, and according to 551076, deliberations related to security matters. A, precinct four, facility security assessment at first entry, safe, located at 8734 Rocket Lane, Converse, Texas 78150. I believe that's the only matters to take up in executive at this time, correct, Mr. Roberson?
Yes, Judge.
All right, so once the courtroom is cleared, Mr. Roberson, you'll have the floor.
I, sure, not my duty. Well. What else you are? Here's the title. With the title, whatever. Could you get a person?